Tuesday, May 20th, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome a full house here with us today and everyone watching online. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then please remain standing at the end for a brief announcement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would all please remain standing. We typically do an invocation before each one of our meetings. We are not going to do that today. Instead, we are going to ask everybody to observe a moment of silence. If you do not know, our former Director of Emergency Operations, Sam Grant, passed away last week, and in remembrance of him, we would like to take a minute and just observe a moment of silence. Please be seated. One other quick announcement, Mr. Knoll is not with us today. He had a family obligation, so we did not have an administrative session. And Carol is filling in admirably for Mr. Knoll, probably better as we go through this. We do have one slight change to the public meeting agenda. I recommend that we are going to postpone our proclamation for the Garrett County postal workers on their 250th anniversary. So I would request that we remove that, and with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, the agenda is approved as amended. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions or concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, minutes approved by mutual consent. We have a relatively light agenda today. We do have some proclamations that are very important that we will give out in just a second, and then we will go into the presentation for all of you that are interested in sticking around. We will have the presentation on the proposed fiscal '26 operating and capital budget, which will take up the remainder of the meeting. Everyone is welcome to stay for that if you would like. So just an announcement there. And also, our next public meeting is Monday, June 2nd here, and that will actually be the meeting where we will adopt the budget formally. With that, we are very pleased to present three different proclamations today. The first one is for National Poppy Day, and I'll invite my new friend Avon Lee up here as Ms. Poppy. And I will present Ms. Poppy with this proclamation for May 23rd, National Poppy Day 2025. Whereas the Board of Garrett County Commissioners and the citizens of Garrett County recognize the importance of honoring those that have worn our nation's uniform, and whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in our U.S. military. Poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans and service members, and whereas the use of the poppy symbolically comes from the poem in Flanders' Fields, which movingly begins, "In Flanders' Fields the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row," referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned earth of battlefields across Belgium and France where soldiers died fighting. And whereas wearing a poppy unites citizens from across America by showing their patriotism, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Garrett County Commissioners officially designates Friday, May 23rd, 2025, as National Poppy Day in Garrett County, and encourage all residents and visitors to join observing this day, along with the American Legion, to honor every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veterans, service members, and their families. Signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. Avon Lee, would you like to say anything?
Uh.
You don't have to. Okay. Do you want to come right over here? I'll be asking you, and I'll take a picture of you for the page. All right, the next proclamation that we are pleased to give out is for Water Safety Month, and Sherry, and I think you might have others with you, if you would come up. And as you are doing that, I will read this proclamation for Water Safety Month. Consider the following from the U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention and the National Safety Council. About one in five people who die from drowning are children 14 years and younger. For every child under age 18 who dies from drowning, another seven receive emergency department care for non-fatal drowning. Over 90% of drowning deaths occur in low and middle-income regions, with children under the age of five at highest risk. Formal swimming lessons can reduce the risk of drowning by 88%. Whereas I Can Swim program has celebrated its 13th anniversary of providing all kindergarten children in Garrett County free water safety instruction and swim lessons, and whereas through a partnership with the Garrett College Community Aquatic and Recreation Complex, Garrett County Board of Education, Board of County Commissioners, and the Garrett College Foundation, the I Can Swim program has successfully served 3,742 Garrett County children since 2011 in lifesaving water safety instruction, and whereas parents, residents, Garrett County Public Schools, Garrett County Commissioners, and local businesses have enthusiastically supported the I Can Swim program through participation, charitable giving, and philanthropic gifts in order to sustain the program for 13 years. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Water Safety Month in Garrett County, and urge all citizens to celebrate, recognize, participate in, and support this important lifesaving program. Signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. And I know as a father of one of the children who have been through this and several more to go through it, and I know Commissioner Savage also has a child that's gone through this and another one to come. It's a great program. Thank you all very much for what you do. And, yep. Anything anybody would like to say?
Thank you for the Commissioners' support and the support of the community of the I Can Swim program. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
It's important to all of us to continue with this program.
Right, and Angela is our very able coordinator. She makes it all work, right? We have the easy part, just to raise the money, right?
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And also, another very important program, a proclamation for the 60th anniversary for Garrett County Head Start, and I know Tracy Bowman and a lot of her team, and Chris, as this is run through Community Action, if you all want to come up and empty out our audience.
Close to the crowd. I have to squeeze in.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna get little kiddos up in here.
So this proclamation reads, whereas in 1965, the Head Start program was established nationwide with the vision of providing comprehensive early childhood education, health, nutrition, and family support services to low-income families through federal funding, and whereas Head Start has impacted millions across the country and in Garrett County annually serves nearly 200 children from birth to five years, and whereas on the path to prosperity, Head Start improves educational outcomes, is committed to providing preventative and early intervention health services, and gives parents the skills to be their child's first and best teacher, and whereas this 60th anniversary offers a moment to reflect on the program's legacy as an essential resource in our community and to reaffirm our support for its continued success, now therefore the Board of Garrett County Commissioners hereby celebrates the 60th anniversary of Garrett County Head Start and commend all those involved educators, administrators, parents, and supporters, past and present, for their unwavering dedication to improving the lives of our youngest residents and their families in our county and beyond. Be it proclaimed on this 20th day of May 2025 that the Board of Garrett County Commissioners expresses its appreciation to the Garrett County Community Action Committee, Garrett County Head Start, and Early Head Start, and their partners, and invite all citizens to join in this observance by encouraging continued investment in high-quality early childhood programs for the benefit of future generations. Garrett County Community Action Head Start, birth to five, signed by Commissioners Savage, Titchnell, and myself. Thank you all very much. It's great to see so many of you here, and look forward to working with you all in the future.
I think I got everyone.
I'm good, I'm good.
Tracy, anything you want to say?
I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for the community support, partner support, you know, Thomas, and the room, with the library, the public school system, and all those who partner to make Head Start a success, because we can't be without the partners. The staff, you know, most of which, standing here, have been here longer than I have, you know, that's a testament to the program and what it does, and most important, the family and children, you know, that are here. Again, this isn't a program without their participation and trust in us with, you know, their children and their families' lives and information, so we appreciate all of them too, so thank you.
Thank you. Let the room clear out. And there are now seats available for those of you that were standing. You can come in and sit down, please. All right, from all that good news to some more good news, we are now ready for the fiscal '26 operating and capital budget presentation. This is the proposed budget. At the conclusion of this budget, there'll be a two-week comment period online, or certainly can reach out to any one of us if anything catches your eye, questions, or comments, or concerns, obviously can dialogue directly with the Finance Department as well if there were specific questions on how they come up with certain numbers. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Department and our Director, Scott Weeks.
I didn't hear any applause, Commissioner.
That's because they're expecting bad news, but it's good news.
No, this is, as you know, this is the most wonderful time of the year, so, anyway, good evening, and thank you Commissioners for having me. As Director of Finance, as you know, it's my responsibility to present a balanced budget, and after nearly five months of hard work, internal department meetings, public discussions with outside agencies, and countless hours of analysis, I'm pleased to bring forward a proposed balanced budget for your consideration. Before I begin though, I just want to thank all of our staff, some of my staffs here this evening, and some of them are going to present, just for their hard work and patience, all the department heads' patience throughout the process. We had tons of meetings, their diligence and support throughout this process, their collaboration was essential to getting us to this point. At the outset of the budget cycle, you all asked me if there was a possibility of reducing the tax rate next year. At that time, I said I'd look into it, but it was simply too early to say at that point, and I always answer those questions, it depends to you, so. Then came the Governor's proposed budget, and it came out in January, and with it, we were faced with a $6.3 million projected hit on our finances. From that, we had to take a deeper look at our priorities, make difficult decisions, and make sure we still could deliver a responsible balanced budget without compromising services of our community that they depend on. So I want to give you a look at what that, what the state came out with now. If you can turn that on, Carol, please. So this is what we were faced with. We called it the $6.3 million state effect at the time. If you look at the top left, the state was wanting to cut our disparity grant, and in that disparity grant, if you recall back in 2013, teachers' pensions were passed on to the county. In an effort to help us out, the state also gave back a $406,000 grant that was baked into our disparity grant. 50% of that revenue will be reduced in FY '26, that was the proposal, and then they were going to cut the other 50% in FY '27. So the regular grant amount will be reduced by $83,863. That's due to the narrowing between the disparity between the states' per capita tax yield and ours, our per capita yield. So we were looking at $286 cut, $287,000 cut in our disparity grant, that's the revenue stream. Then, to double up on us, they wanted to pass more teachers' pensions on us. We thought at the time that that amount was going to be $437,598, and then for the first time ever, they were passing the college pensions on us, $50,409,000. Top right there, you'll see State Department of Assessments right now. We pay 50% of those operating costs. The state legislature, they've been after to increase that almost every session in the past five years, and they finally succeeded, and we now will pay 90% of the cost for the State Department of Assessments, the local office downstairs. That will increase our expense, our expense budget by $261,421. That was at least the proposal. You'll see a different number on the next slide when we get there. Income tax, as you know, the Governor came out, he was pretty aggressive. They were, they were facing a major deficit, so ways for them to bring more income in was to mess with the income tax. While it would help most middle-class Americans, that would affect our revenue stream here at the county. The Governor was proposing the, I think it was actually more than double the standard deduction, and then they were going to phase out the itemized deductions as part of that. They were raising the higher income brackets and lowering some of the lower income brackets. That would have had an impact on Garrett County of $1.2 million, if that would have stuck. Board of Education blueprint funding, it's no, no secret, and we're going to really go in detail on this tonight, as we always do. I've mentioned it the last two budget cycles. That's our number-one challenge, and that's what we are really planning, our revenues out for the future, to, to fund our, the mandate for education. But that, that's going to be a $4 million increase to our expenses. So that was the beginning of the Governor's session. By the end of the session, this is what stuck, $5 million state effect. Everything in red were the changes. They reduced the teachers' pensions a little bit to $218,799, but I can almost bet that we'll see the remaining of that next year or in future years. State Department of Assessments, $267,650, that was just a slight adjustment upward from the first slide that I showed you. And then they really backed off on the income tax. They had some increases on the standard deductions, but they weren't as drastic, they weren't two times or two and a half times. And then they will keep the itemized deductions, but they'll start phasing them out over incomes of $200,000. So $5 million state effect, the one that we were really honing in on, that wasn't a surprise to us, was the Board of Education blueprint, blueprint funding. So one would expect our budget to at least increase by this amount if we didn't cut other services or raise other additional revenues. So as I mentioned before, education is our number-one challenge that we are really trying to project out and get a handle on, but it's very difficult to do that. If you would see the formula, and I'm going to have Mr. Brill come up and explain that here in a little bit, but this is what originally came out in, I think it was 2020. This was the original schedule, so this is how they sold it to the legislature. If you look at Garrett County, they were saying, Garrett County's only going to go up $300,000 in 10 years by fiscal year 2030. So it's highlighted there, you look over every year, it's zeros, and then it increases $300,000. So who wouldn't vote for that? I mean, it's only $300,000, and it was doing great things for the state of Maryland and all the counties. So if you look to the right chart, you'll see the bill, $37.6 million, I think it's the third column over from the left, 37.6, that's what we had in our minds at that time. If you look at the bottom of the footnote there, we were funding education $27.7 million. We knew this projection was off because we knew that we had a declining enrollment. Under the maintenance-of-effort formula, under declining enrollment, your, your local share does not go up, but they did have a 2.5% escalator clause. So we knew at that time that the most that it could go up under a declining enrollment was 2.5% every year. That had an expiration date as well, so, but we, we just took it and ran with it, and we knew that $300,000 was not an accurate figure. It was more like 2.8 million that it was going to cost us, so that's what we were planning on, like a 2.8 million increase at that time. Then I think a year or two later, new projections came out, and if you look to the far right, they, they drug it out a little further to 2034, and we were at $47 million. If you look at 2030, they were at $40 million point four. So still off from their original projections and major increases at that time. Jump ahead to this session, this is a new chart that just came out. If you look at the far right, they're now projecting $58 million. So our question is, which number is correct? 37.6? We know that's not correct. $47 million or $58 million? This is why this is difficult to project in our funding models, in our forecasting models. You've got a swing of $20 million on these DLS schedules that you can not put any reliance in. Now, we were able to find some of their assumptions, what they're building into it, and I don't know if Cody's going to get into that or not, but I just want to show you like how difficult it is to put these in your forecasting models and really try to project when you're going to run out of funds and when you have to raise taxes or generate new, new revenues. I would like to introduce Cody to you right now. He's one of our accountants, he's our financial analyst. I just want him to give a quick refresher on how the blueprint funding formula works. We went through this probably two years ago, he took probably 20 minutes to a half hour, and we went through that formula in detail with you, but I, I just want you to try to understand what we're up against and how, how complex the formula is. So I'll turn it over to you, Cody. I'll just sit here.
All right. Just want to start off by saying thank you for the Commissioners for giving us some time to go through this, to just better educate the public in what we're up against with these challenges. As Mr. Weeks says, it's probably the biggest local government finance challenge over the next 10 years, including probably the last two years. So understanding the blueprint and where those costs are going probably holds the biggest key for understanding where we're going as a county in finance terms, so. Do you want to go to that first slide, Carol? So I just want to give a brief overview, as Mr. Weeks said, we went through this in much more detail two years ago, and if you're really passionate about local government finance, you can kind of, you can still find that online. So what the blueprint looks to do is, is what is the cost to educate each and every child? So it's going to look at all K through 12 students fit in the foundation program. This year, the per pupil expenditure amount on that is $9,200 and change. Every year, that goes up until I believe 2033 as far as statute, and then there's a inflation escalator after that point. There's a number of other boxes that students can qualify in addition to that, compensatory education, or your low-income students, English learning self-explanatory, I believe there's like 11 more of those. So if a student qualifies for one of those programs, that's an additional dollar amount that the state deems it costs to educate that child. Now, what you're seeing is the total amount for that child, state and local, but that's kind of how, once you get the cost for every child, aggregate that for all the different children we have in Garrett County, and that's kind of how they get the number for the funding model, so. Starting with the foundation amount, like I said, every kid, that's pre-K through 12, I'm sorry, kindergarten through 12 qualifies for the foundation. How that is calculated is they get a local contribution rate. That's done by taking the statewide enrollment, which is projected to increase modestly every year, the foundation per pupil rate, which will increase every year, and then it's kind of a relative difference between the county wealth and the state wealth. And what we mean by wealth is that is the ability of each county to raise revenue. It's not the amount of revenue they raise, okay? So if your assessment goes up, the education bill goes up with it relative, as long as it's more or less than the state. If it's less than the state, then it may go down. The other big piece of it, I'll tell you about 71%, 72% is your property tax assessments as far as deriving what the county wealth is. Another 20% is the income tax, and that makes up quite the majority of that calculation. What we've seen the last three or four years is the county is, is a big issue last year. Assessments continue to grow, and that might sound good, but outside of the Commissioners' control, the education bill goes up with it. So that's kind of the biggest piece of the program. Like I said, every year, state enrollment's going to go up, every year, foundation per pupil rate's going to go up, and through most of our projections, along with the state projections, our county wealth formula will probably outpace the state. So that means every year, you're probably going to have multimillion-dollar increases to that program alone. And I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but this, this past year, about $2 million shifted from the state to the locality as far as the burden for paying for that And the other important piece with this, so that is how we get the local appropriations for the dollar amount. Now what's, how you determine how much the school gets and how much the state gives is the difference. So if we have 3,200 kids, times that $9,200 amount this year, that's the total that the school system will get. This calculation gives us our local dollar amount, and the state just makes up the rest, okay? Know where in this formula, unfortunately, I'll have you note, is what our local enrollment is. So if we have a declining enrollment, that benefits the state and doesn't benefit us, okay? So that's how we get a $2 million increase on our side and a $2 million decrease on the state side. Now, a majority of the other programs are based off of wealth per pupil, it's a different formula, and in fact, most of these have at least two different formulas to get the number. Unfortunately, we fall into the least favorable on just about all of them, because as you can see, I think two years ago, we were seventh, and we predicted after we had all of group two assessed and in the pipeline, that we jumped to fourth, and that's where we're at. So that's total, that's per pupil wealth, okay? So according to the state, when you look at it on a per, per pupil basis, Garrett County is the fourth most wealthy county in the state. I'll also point out that the other ones in the top are all small counties. So these are a lot of counties that are a little bit older, don't have as many kids, a little bit smaller, probably don't have the political power that some of those other ones do. So the ones that we're seeing at the top that are picking up a lot of the burden are your more rural counties, your older counties. Montgomery County is obviously the outlier on that list, but they're probably in the top 20 for richest counties in the country. That kind of makes sense. And just for reference, there at the bottom, we can see where our other western Maryland counties are at, you know, Allegheny. You know, Allegheny's third from the bottom, Washington County's fifth from the bottom. And actually, under their formula, they're still on the old maintenance of effort. Their blueprint bill is so small that they're still on an escalator from the old method. So, and again, it's all based off wealth. Now, this is wealth per pupil, which probably disadvantages us even more so because every year, our wealth is projected to outburden the state, but our enrollment is declining. So that number keeps going up, and the formulas get less favorable to us. Now luckily, some of them are capped at 60%. Comp Ed's a big one, special ed's a big one. The biggest one that's not capped, and we pay almost, I believe I have the number on a slide coming up here, is pre-K. And that program is, as we get to universal pre-K in the future, that program's only gonna grow, and that number gets quite big down the road. Okay, so here's just a breakdown of the share to the Board of Ed receives from the blueprint, whether it comes from a local or a state share. The foundation, foundation program, we're paying 70% of it. Just about all the other programs, we're paying at least 60%, most of them higher than that. Pre-K's almost 70%, that's probably gonna continue to grow in the coming years. And the other thing I wanna point out is, is that local share, the disparity between local and state, you know, almost $9 million, that's gonna continue to go up. Mr. Weeks alluded to those projections, the most recent projection, we're getting up to 58 million. I believe in 20, he's at 35. I think that's probably high. We have our own model based on our own assumptions. I think we know a little bit more about our locality than the state, so we're a little bit below that. Not a lot, wish it was more. But a lot of that has to do with that foundation piece on the state level because of our relative wealth. It just keep going down, and we just keep picking up more of the bill of it. So in a lot of ways, the Board of Ed is receiving more money in total, but not a whole lot. It's just more of it's coming from us than the state. There's kinda a breakdown a little bit bigger than that. So here's what we're kind of up against. Obviously, this is the '26 budget. '24 blueprint came online for us. I believe before that, it was, what, '22 and '23? It was there, but we were still on the maintenance of effort. We saw big reassessments in group two, and that's what jacked up our wealth related to the state. And you see the projected expenditures for what we have for that. And the red line there on the bottom is the projected state amount. And you can't help but notice that theirs is unchanged, and by the time we get all the way out to 2034, they're actually paying less than they are now. The county's paying significantly more. And just to reiterate, a lot of this, actually all of this, is outside of the commissioner's control. Has nothing to do with tax rates on property tax, nothing to do with tax rates on income tax. Everything has to do with your assessment that's set by the state and your taxable income on your income tax. So obviously, those rules are set by the state, but if more people make more money, that's a good thing. But our education bill's gonna go up with it. And originally, we showed this two years ago. We had a projected county shortfall at FY '29, and over the last two years, with good work from Mr. Noel, Mr. Weeks, and leadership from the commissioners, we've been able to push that deficit back two years, mostly through cost mitigation for things that are in our control. Any questions about that?
No good synopsis, thank you.
Michael's gonna try to get this bigger so you can actually see it. Take up the whole screen here. That was easy. Thanks, Michael. Okay, since we're focused on the expenses, I'm just gonna carry on with the expenses. We're gonna go down each of these functions of government, and we're gonna look at the third column over the change. And I'm just gonna highlight some of the big changes, what's driving some of these variances. So we'll start with general government. If you look at the 595,000 increase from one year to the next, it's about 7.42. What I wanna point out, that's the category that the Assessment Office is in. 267,000 of those expenses that are passed back from the state shifted over to us. It's in that category. That made up about 3.33% of the change. We also have about 2.51% of salaries and fringes increasing in that category. And then the remaining is just other operating accounts of 127,000 or 1.58%. Next category, public safety. Shows a 4.62 increase or $749,000. One of the big drivers here, as assessments go up, a lot of you probably don't know, in our tax rate of $1.056, we have a buried tax for fire and rescue. We don't say much about it, it's always been there. .034 cents goes to fire and rescue, and .0078 cents goes to the rescue squads. Those combined are about four cents. 4.18 cents of our tax rate goes to fire and rescue. So the good thing is, as our assessments go up, more goes out to our fire and rescue companies. And probably in that amount of 749, it's like 7, $279,000 increase to fire and rescue. So I just wanted to note that. That made up about 1.72%. Also in here, our operating costs make up the rest of 2.9%. That's salary and fringes to include two new full-time ALS providers for EMS. We have two 911 police and police dispatchers included in here. One thing I didn't mention on the first slide that I probably should have included at the onset, onset of the governor's budget, when he announced the budget, he had a mandatory courtroom security officer. So the state's mandating that we have an additional officer in the courtroom after what happened in Washington County. Was that last year or the year before?
Year before.
One of the judges got shot. So that's a state mandated position. And then we have a couple overlapping positions where we have to have two officers on our books at one time because we have, we have retirements coming up. So they're overlapping in salaries and fringes for like a six-month period while we get a new employee trained and, and on the road. So that's what makes up the $749,000 variance there. Public works, that's an easy one. That's simply, we have 620,000 additional dollars for paving. And all we're doing there, it's not because of the cost of materials are going up, although I'm sure they're going up a little. But we're just increasing the miles of paving from 27 miles to 32 miles. We normally try to pave about 25 miles, and I think you guys heard that when Paul Harvey was here going over the roads budget. Other than that, once you back that out, really that category only went up less than 1% other than paving. That's what's driving it. So I just commend ourselves on decreasing some of those costs. There's, there's a lot that goes on in public works with the roads department and, and engineering. Community health, I think you, that was another public presentation. They came in with a flat-funded budget. That reflects such there as well. Education, I just went over that. The 4,259,000 for the Board of Education is the blueprint funding of 4 million. And then the teachers' pensions of 219,000. Garrett College, they also came in with a flat funding budget on the operating side. The 50,409 represents the teachers' pension, or not teachers, the pensions of the college that the state's passing off for us. Ruth and the Library has a modest increase. That's due to salary and fringe, and they had some other operating costs that were increased. And I think Todd Thomas mentioned a grant that was offsetting some of those things in the past that no longer offsets that, or I think that's what he said. So anyway, we looked over that, and it was, it was an acceptable increase for us. So we're proposing that you fund them 52,688. Jumping down, I won't hit on parks and recs and culture. Public service, I think, I believe that's where the extension service comes in. It's sort of another state mandate. They raise salary and fringe, and then they ask us for the money. So it's going up 2.78% or $8,672. Economic development remain fairly flat there, 17,763 increase. Economic opportunity, that includes, it's a weird title for the category. People ask me that, why is it called that? That's what the financial statements, that's how they report it. That's where community action is, area agency on aging, departments like that. It is increasing 452,230. There's a mass transit grant of $230,000, an increase in that grant. You'll see that when I get to the revenue side, an increase on that, on the revenue side for the same amount as well. That made up about 12% of, of the increase. Then on community action side of things, there's an increase of 168,000. If you recall, Chris came in public session and asked for 489,000 for mass transit because he was cut funding on that. So I think he's done a really good job. He's only asking to cover 168,000. We broke that 489 out into 367 is what you amended this year's budget for. So we are expecting at least to see a $123,000 increase to getting through that 12-month period. And he's only asking for 168 on top of that. So it sounds like he's been able to absorb some of that mass transit operating funds. So they're fully funded. Community Action's fully funded. America, or Aging, Area Agency on Aging, they're fully funded at a 2.5% increase of $48,000. So that is that category, economic opportunity. Then miscellaneous, there's a lot in miscellaneous. My staff sort of picks on me. That's another accounting category where it doesn't fit any function of government. Those are, where all of our transfer out, transfers out to enterprise funds go. We have enterprise funds of dot com, airport, and landfill. As you recall, last year in the budget, we had a transfer out to the landfill for a $2.5 million gas infrastructure project. So that's really what's, they don't have that this year, so that's really what's the, the variance is about. There's other things in this category, like undistributed employee benefits, like retirees' health insurance. I think it costs us about 650,000. We have a contingency of $1 million in this category. And our OPEB account that we're funding is, comes out of this category. So all in all, if you look at fourth column over, third line up, our operations are going up about 4.93%. And just to do a gut check on that, you see 4.8 million dollars. Our, our budget's increasing on operations. And then you look up at the Board of Ed or education category, and it's about 4.4 million dollars of that. So with that, if you look at the capital line, we are funding more capital. Again, that was our approach from, from the get-go. We were gonna be aggressive on catching up on a lot of the capital that we, we lagged behind on. Catch up on capital and then peel those dollars away into operations as the blueprint unfolded. That was our strategy, and that's what we've been doing. We're increasing our capital for next year by $2 million for a total of 13.118. And I'm gonna ask our Assistant Director of Finance to come now and go over the capital section. This is Jeff, Jeff Brodler.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. I tell you, Mr. Weeks is a tough act to follow. For those of you who are not in the finance world, he's well-respected and often considered like the, the Michael Jordan of the finance world, so. And not to, not to steal Commissioner Edward Thunder, but as he would say, you're kinda going from the varsity to the JV team, so bear with me. But stop being said, I do appreciate the commissioners and the opportunity to come out and talk to you. Also appreciate seeing more, more members of the public. I think it's great that members of the public come out and show interest in support or opposition to the budget. I think it's great to have people out here and talk with them. And the more people get, I think it's the better, and you'll get a better result, so. What I'm gonna go over tonight is just the capital. And for the last three or four years, you've heard Mr. Weeks talk about we're gonna try to, to catch up and get ahead on capital. We look at the capital and finances, it's kinda, it's almost like the stock market. It has its highs and lows. And if you go clear back to 2006, 2007, we went through an eight- and 10-year period where we had to cut capital out. We had to reduce it. So we kinda got behind. Now we're in where, you know, we are seeing some additional funding. So what we're trying to do, we're, we're in a three-year window, if you, if you would, between where, where we have some funding, but where the blueprint takes over. I know you guys are tired of hearing about the blueprint. But what we're focusing on, as Mr. Weeks told you for the last several years, is one-time expenditures, non-recurring stuff. So that's what I'm gonna go over tonight, kinda hit the high points. A lot of this has already been going over as the various departments and agencies that we fund presented their, their budget request. So I'm gonna hit some high points, and then I'm gonna kinda go through some of the items that wasn't discussed already in public, and then just do a quick overview, and then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Weeks. All right, so the first slide here, there really are general government, capital expenditures. The majority of these are, are new to the public. They haven't been going over. I'm just gonna kinda go through these in more detail. The courthouse elevator controls, this is a difficult one to project. And I will say, with all our capital expenditures, these are only estimates. Every one of them will go through our typical procurement policy where we, we bid, get RFPs, quotes, state contracts, that kinda stuff. So our staff did the best that they could. It's difficult right now because a lot of the vendors and stuff are so busy. It's hard to get people to give you an estimate, especially if they're known for budget purposes. But we did get cost estimates on each of these. The courthouse elevator controls, that's for the elevator in the old courthouse, which is used, you know, as you guys know, to, to transport a lot of inmates and stuff into the court system. And this is basically just to, to rehab the entire, entire elevator. We were able to get a quote. It's roughly about 107,000, and then we're anticipating electrical work and that kinda stuff. So it's probably gonna come in, especially when we get bids and stuff, probably around 125,000. The health center, HVAC, this is really just to get up to the building energy performance standards that's coming in Maryland. So as we talked about before, now that we have a little bit of extra funding for one-time expenditures, we wanna try to get a jump on this and replace that so we can meet. It's basically the zero-carbon footprint there, and we wanna try to get ahead on that. So that'd be the replacement of the HVAC system there, the heat pump straightforward there. Courthouse improvements, kinda go, go through a little bit of that. The bulk of it is the copper top on the, on the old courthouse. Very difficult to get estimates. So that, that is our best guess. About 200,000 of it has replacing the copper dome, and then we got about 20,000 in there upgrading and fixing the balcony on the old courthouse. The Second Street Building improvements, wanna hit on that a little bit. Second Street Building is the former Board of Ed administrative building, M&amp;T building. We purchased that approximately 24 years ago for a million dollars. At year-to-date, since the purchase of it, we've, we've made about 100 and, or about 500,000 in profit. So we've got about 1.5 million dollars in lease money from that, so we're already to the good. In addition, we've been able to provide the Board of Education Administrative Offices free rent for 24 years. So with that, we've, you know, let some of the, the maintenance items, you know, kinda get behind. So we've got estimates as much as 4 million. Our facilities and maintenance staff has went through everything, and they think the 2.3 million is what it's gonna take to get it up to, up to standards. This includes paving, electrical, roofing, HVAC, the whole nine yards. As we continue to rent part of it to M&amp;T, question is still, you know, considering alternatives of what we're gonna do with this building. We can either sell it. They have had some discussions about relocating some of the administrative offices and potentially selling some of other county facilities. But regardless of whatever we do here, we've got our money out of already, and we're gonna have some opportunity to, like I said, sell this building or another building and relocate people. So again, this one's still a little up in the air, what the final result would be, but we think we can, we can get it up to speed with about 2.3 million. The maintenance shop, this would be for the facilities and maintenance and also park of the Department of Public Utilities. The maintenance shop, this would be for the facilities and maintenance and also park of the department of public utilities. And it'll be part, and I'll go ahead and skip down to the, the second one from the bottom, courthouse paving. This is all one project, and this would be the blue building across the street. It would be basically tearing that down to create additional parking for, for, um, residents and, and people coming into the courthouse. And then we would move that facility shop and also house part of the public utilities out at Francis Sanders Drive. The landscaping was done years ago, so we're looking at approximately a fifty-by, um, fifty-by-seventy building um, for each, so a hundred-by-seventy in total. And this would house, um, the offices, restrooms, uh, spec, spec room and stuff for the facilities and maintenance department. And also house, um, the vac truck and, uh, boarding machine, some of the larger pieces of equipment that we currently don't have any place to store for the utilities department, so. Uh, county facilities paving, pretty straightforward, just, um, the bulk of that is the, um, the visitor center and the health department, and that's just material costs, we're going to do that work in-house. And so, and then I think I've pretty much covered the maintaining walls pretty straightforward. All right, with these, I'm going to, I'm going to recap these quickly. I know you guys have been here a long time, and Mr. Week had a lot of other stuff to go through. These have already been presented in public session. Sheriff Myers was up here a couple of weeks ago, did a great job. Um, I just want to kind of explain a little bit how we do the vehicles, because it's, it's a good checks and balance. We got it in place a few years ago, the commissioners, you know, were in support of it, and we got a lead mechanic. Um, so how it works is, you know, we, we get, uh, employees coming in. And if it was up to them, they'd replace the vehicles once a year, you know, we'd probably be driving Ferraris, the whole nine yards. If it was up, up to Mr. Weeks, we'd still be on horseback. So we needed like a, a checks and balance, so we have a lead mechanic. So anytime a department comes up and say, hey, we need vehicles, we send them out. Our lead mechanic reviews, and it's like, hey, you can get another year out of it, or hey, this is rather unsafe, or it's going to cost you more to keep it on the road than to replace it. So at that point, they deadline them, and then they send us a final list, and then we budget accordingly. So with this, it's just replacing three, um, three Durangos and then a, a RAV4. And these are fully outfitted in that cost. It, it has a, um, fully outfitted police vehicle, including the radar, again. Sheriff Myers presented that to you. Um, we, there was a reduction in one, and it was after our, our maintenance staff sat down with, um, with the police department, and they come to terms, and, and four is their recommendation at this point. Roads division, I'm not going to, I'm not really going to spend a lot of time on this one, it's a big number, two million dollars. Um, Paul Harvey was here two weeks ago, did an excellent job presenting this. Uh, and I just want to commend the, the roads department on the great job they do. Couple of highlights on it that, um, not to steal his thunder, just to recap some of the stuff that he told for those who wasn't here. We maintain about six hundred and eighty-two miles of road. Uh, we got approximately, the top line's always a big one, you see that every year in the budget. We actually have about fifty, I think it's fifty-five total plow trucks in the fleet. So we get, you know, about twenty-five years out of a lot of these, and we have some. And we're trying to get, I think we still have a couple ninety-nines out there, we're trying to upgrade those, so. Um, those single axles, and I think, um, we, the, um, Commissioner Ryan come up, hey, stands out, and the triaxle i- is less. And, and the difference, the tracks just coming as a truck, and the single axles are fully outfitted, plows and, and spreaders and the whole nine yards, so. Again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go lying, I didn't lie, because it's kind of already went through. And we did not, um, for those who are paying a lot of attention to the details, finance did not cut any of these. We did move some radios, and there was some signs, electronic signs and stuff for the, um, the vehicles. We moved some of them into operating and some of them back into capital, but this otherwise. Um, there was no changes from the presentation made, um, two weeks ago by Paul Harvey. Second phase of that is the bridge program. Want to just kind of give a quick overview of it. And approximately two years ago, we hired a new project manager, Tracy Kelly, to kind of get our bridge program um, moving in the right direction, if you will. Just to give you guys some ideas, uh, we consider the larger culverts part of the bridge program. We have a hundred and twenty-eight actual bridges, and then we have additional sixty-four culverts for a total of a hundred and ninety-two bridges. For a long time, whether, whether it's, um, financial constraints or whatever the situation may be, uh, we were getting, you know, one of these a year, one of these every two years, so we kind of got behind. So we're like, hey, we got to get this rolling, so we were able to, um, to snag Tracy Kelly to be a project manager here. She's done a, she's done an excellent job getting these things moving. Right now, we're currently five-year program, we're tracking about thirty-one of these that we want to work on. And the twenty listed here are ones that we think will have expenditures. So these are a variety of expenditures, some of it's engineering, some of it is construction, supplies, that kind of stuff. And don't get caught up in the numbers, because that's not a total project cost, that's just the expenditure for FY twenty-six. We're hoping, and we're on pace currently to, uh, I think finish up three of them this year. And over the next couple of years, we intend to finish, uh, approximately four a year. So we want to get those, those back on track and get caught up, so. Next one is, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this. The board of ed was here a couple of weeks ago, presented that. First one, the two-point-nine, it's been in there the last two years. Um, this is just year three of a four-year commitment. Um, the passenger vans, anything else to say on that is, um, this was intended, I believe they had some ARC funding, and the regulations and qualifications for that funding changed, so they were unable to acquire the ARC funding, so. We're going to pick that up for them. Um, and Garrett College, and I'll tell, I'll forewarn you guys, I'm very passionate about athletics and stuff, coached and have a million kids play through it, so I want to commend Rich and, and the program at Garrett. Um, I love the place, I love the facilities, and, um, I've had two kids play for Garrett College, and I just think it's a, it's an amazing place, and I've been able to, and if you, if you haven't been down there, it, um, for a junior college, community college, it's one of, it's probably one of the best in the state, if not in the country. The facilities is, are out there. So with this particular million dollars, it was part of a, um, a four-million-dollar program that the commissioners had already funded, two-point-five. There was, um, intention that the state would fund the additional one-point-five, um, but that funding did fall through, so. Um, the college commander presented, uh, a million dollars of that, and they're going to come up with the other five hundred thousand. And, um, I just want to highlight a couple of things on the college, it really impressed me in, in Rich's, um, presentation, I guess. Um, the, the, the total headcount, you know, you see a lot of community colleges and colleges in general, some of the tuition and stuff's down. But over the last five years, Garrett College has actually increased by twenty-eight percent. And athletics alone has increased by a hundred and thirty-three percent. So over the last five years, they've taken on additional ninety-three athletes, you know, and, and I'm always, I'm always for supporting, supporting sports and that kind of thing. Because I think it does a lot, it does a lot for the improvement of the, um, community, it does a lot for the kids. Um, not only at the college level, but with all these nice facilities, the high school and middle school, a lot of them are able to have tournaments, have games, and that kind of stuff, so they share the facilities. I just think it's an outstanding thing. On top of that, you know, as Rich presented, um, the residence hall over the last five years, the number of residents in the halls, um, is, is almost doubled, you know, I can attest to that. Um, my, my, those of my boys played, played baseball there the last couple of years. And they get kids from Florida, they get kids from Canada, international, you get kids from all over the place. And not only do they come in here for the education, help support the college, they help support the facilities, which help the local kids. But in addition to that, I mean, the kids are here, and I can attest to it, my, my two boys take my credit card, and they buy everything all at McHenry, so. Um, but they're out there, they're, they're, they're helping the businesses, they're, they're helping the community, they're doing things, so. Can't say enough about Rich and the job they're doing at Garrett College, just want to give a shout out to them while I'm up here. And to Coach Howlin' Beck, I don't know if you guys followed, but Garrett College baseball this year, thirty-six wins, which was a school record, so. Um, I think what they're doing is great, and, and not only on top of that, because I've, I've coached baseball my entire life, and seen a lot of kids where they go away, they flunk out of school, they come back, and, you know, you know the story. But I will say that, um, Rich and everybody down there, I'm not only serious about their athletic, but about academics. You know, the kids down there, the, the teachers, the coaches, um, the administrative staff, they make sure they're going to class, they make sure they're getting better, and, um, it, it, it's really, really paid dividends. And you see that, you're getting more and more kids coming out, and you're getting more and more kids graduating and expanding their careers through Garrett College. So great job, Rich, and appreciate you guys' time. Anybody have any questions on the capital, um, just let me know, appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for the jabs, too, appreciate you guys. All right, so now for the fun part. This is just a breakdown, am I back on? This just gives you a graphical representation of all the expenditures, a recap of what we just went through. Um, education's always our highest percentage, thirty-seven percent. But it, it is a little distorted on this graph, because if you look over to the other side in the purple, you'll see, um, capital, eleven percent. Actually, if you, that capital includes everything that Jeff just went over. If you had moved the education capital back to the education category, it would shift that graph to forty percent. Um, and it would ship the capital down some, so just wanted to point that out. But this is no surprise, education's usually the biggest, uh, chunk of, um, any county government's, uh, graph. And then public works is a big, um, area for us as well. And again, under capital, there's, uh, public works capital in there as well, so that's just a summary. Um, now for the good part, is how are we going to pay for all this? And I'll go down each line item again, um, but this here is more detailed. All the taxes and everything that's in here is really summarized on this slide, and I'll usually go over this. So I'm going to focus on ninety-five percent of the revenue categories, or one hundred and eleven million dollars of the, of what, of the revenue drivers. So the first line item, real property tax, we're showing an increase of four million dollars. The challenge you gave me back in December, or asked me about, I think we're going to be able to, um, drop the rate. We're going to propose dropping the rate from a dollar five-six cents per one hundred to a dollar two per one hundred, dropping the rate almost four cents, or point zero-three-six cents. What that does, um, if we would have kept the rate at a dollar five-six cents, we would have generated six-point-four million dollars and not the four million dollars that you see. So we're actually reducing our revenue stream on, on real property tax, um, by two-point-four million dollars. So what we've done in turn then is we have moved a lot of that, a lot of our revenue streams upward because we had too much conservatism in those figures. And what really distorted a lot of these figures was COVID. When we went through that time, um, to give you an idea, back in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, our income tax was fourteen-point-four and sixteen-point-five million dollars. That's what we were basing our projections off of. COVID hit, and it went up to sixteen-point-eight the following year in, in twenty-two. And in twenty-three, we ended close to twenty million dollars. So now that we are post-COVID, we have good trend data that we can have a little bit more reliance on. Again, we're still a little nervous about moving these too far because the state has the control. If their income tax proposal would have went in, we would have lost one-point-two million dollars. Now that didn't, that wouldn't have really affected us too much because we were way below that. But it did affect our funding model that we project out ten years. We had, we had all that revenue in our funding model, so it would have affected that, and we would have had to, we would have ran out of money sooner than our projections. So we're, we're comfortable with moving this up to eighteen and a half right now, that's two million dollars. So that's two million of it. If you jump down to public utilities tax, that's simply an estimate that the state gives us, and we run with it, and we calculate the tax off of it. So they're projecting that we will, um, decrease a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Do I believe that? Not necessarily, I think we'll probably be okay and break even, but we can only go off of what they give us on the projections. Personal property tax, windmills tax, this is where windmills and solar fall under. They're more like a, a utility to us, but the state of Maryland puts them under the personal property tax code. And we tack them, tax them at two and a half percent of our real property tax rate. So by lowering the tax rate, we're also lowering the personal property tax rate. And the personal property tax rate will be, let me see here, it, it'll drop from two-point-six-four per hundred to two-point-five-five. So by doing that, we will also lose two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars of personal property and public utilities tax. Normally, if you look at personal property tax, that has a declining base because the windmills, they depreciate over thirty years, and it drops three-point-three-three percent. So usually, when I have this budget presentation, we see a decline in that, in that variance, in that change. What's driving this increase is actually the, I think it's, uh, the twenty-eight turbines, turbines that, um, Criterion Power Partners just upgraded about a year ago. They finally hit the books here, and that's what's driving that increase. Apologizing, my throat's good. Disparity Grant, I won't belabor that, I went through that earlier. This next category, recordation and transfer tax, this is another one that was very distorted and skewed during COVID. I mean, we were, we were at one-point-eight around that level for years. Um, it went, it would fluctuate a little bit, one-point-nine, we might hit two million, but we would always budget one-point-eight million. During COVID, prices went crazy at, at the lake, people were buying up lake properties, so that really drove it up. We hit a high of four-point-eight million dollars on recordation at one point in time. But that's money you can't count on, so we don't bake it into our operating budget. We use that, any excess over these budget figures for one-time expenditures. So we don't get, um, reliant on that revenue stream, and then if they, it doesn't happen, then we have problems. So post-COVID, we're comfortable with moving both recordation and transfer tax up to two-point-five million for, the two combined would be one-point-four million dollar increase. Forestry and parks, um, that's another, uh, figure that the state gives to us. Um, as you're aware, we get two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for every unit of space. A unit of space equates to ten, ten thousand acres. We have about seven units, so we're receiving about one-point-seven, um, million dollars of tax revenue on that. That's a state figure they give me, I'd write off the schedule, I'd just plug it in. That went off the, sorry about that. Highway user has a slight increase of two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, again, the state gives us that figure. Keep in mind, that two million dollars was once five-point-six million dollars. I think I bring that up every year, but that's how much of our revenue that the state took from us over, over time. Used to be five-point-six million dollars. And then emission amusement, it fluctuates a little bit, I mean, it's one-point-one, some actuals maybe, might hit one-point-two at times. Uh, we're comfortable with budgeting one million dollars. So let me flip back here, real quick. You can see that expenses went up by six-point, um, eight million dollars. So our revenue has to go up by six-point-eight million dollars, and those are all the categories. I, I hit on ninety-five percent of those categories. If you look at the federal grants, I did not hit on that category. I know that's been a concern that's come up in past meetings about, um, the federal government's impact on, on our federal grants. I'll tell you that, uh, in that federal grants figure of one-point-two million dollars, mass transit makes up like nine-hundred thousand dollars of that figure. So we simply add nine-hundred thousand to the revenue, and we add nine-hundred thousand to the expense category. The other, the other, um, grants that make up that are like homeland security grants, things in emergency management, small sheriff's, uh, department grants, um, so really, it's not going to have a significant impact on us in particular. Now, it might have it on outside agencies that we fund, we, and we realize that. But as far as county government in this budget, it doesn't have a huge impact. Um, and then I didn't hit on state grants, you'll see a decline of state grants. Most of Most of the state grants stayed the same. I've mentioned highway user on that other slide. Highway users under that state grants. The decline of one point five million dollars is really, we had a ENSB grant for a phone refresh down in nine one one of one point five. I think that's what it was last year, so that's really what's making up the decline. We don't have that grant this year in this budget. The other category I just want to point out, there's no increase, but investment income, that's another one you don't want to bake into your operations because I've seen that two million dollar figure as high as five million dollars and I've seen it as low as a hundred thousand dollars. So if we would have, if we would bake two million dollars into our budget every year and it ends up being a hundred thousand dollars, you can't get reliant on that and bake it into your operations. We try to use that category also for one-time expenses. Let me see. So I think I've gone over everything in all those categories and that's how we're going to pay for things. We're lowering the tax rate, but we're raising some other categories that we had underbudgeted. This is a breakdown, so if you take the first two pieces, this is no surprise, taxes and state revenue make up ninety-five percent of our budget. Back to the funding model. Cody showed you the forecast for education. That education model is built into our overall funding model, so you can see here how we are anticipating our expenses to increase over time. And as Cody pointed out, we've shifted that now to two thousand thirty-one. You can see that expenditures will be a hundred and thirty-one or a hundred and thirty-two million and our revenue stream will be at a hundred and twenty-eight million. Really, with some conservatism still building that, we think we can squeak by in two thousand thirty-one and maybe even push it to two thousand thirty-two. Again, there's lots and lots of variables in this and really it boils down to what the state's impact on us is going to be. They still have, I think it's a two point seven trillion or billion dollar deficit and it's expected to grow to six million, I think, or six billion, sorry, six billion dollars by two thousand thirty. I don't think they're going to leave us alone. I think they'll still keep coming after us and, and taking some of our money. So there's a lot of contingencies on that funding model and it's something that we really try to fine tune every year and, and keep up with just to make sure we're properly planning for the future. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I do want to go over just some of the highlights. So when we started this budget process, we had expenses exceeding our revenues by one point six million dollars. We were able to cut one point six out of this budget from the request. We're proposing a hundred and three point seven million dollar operating budget and a thirteen point one million capital budget, total one sixteen point eight. We funded the operations of outside agencies, not just education, but there's other outside agencies. We funded those requests, an additional four point three million dollars. And if you include the capital into that, it's fifty-two point seven million dollars is the total or forty-five percent of our total operating capital budget. Blueprint funding increased Garrett County's local share by four point oh four million and then you have the teachers pensions on top of that. Funding of two point nine million for three-year, of year three of four-year capital program that we committed fourteen point four to. And the biggest future challenge is education funding. We are projecting in our models that there's going to be an increase of fifteen point five million dollars in the blueprint funding for public schools over the next nine years. Over the next three years alone, it's going to be six point seven million dollars. Continued investment broadband expansion, we have half a million dollars for that included in these budgets. No reserves are going to be used to balance this budget and no general fund, new general fund debt, maintaining our minimum ten percent rainy day fund. No income tax increase. The rate will remain at two point six five, making, I think, if people didn't shift below us, making Garrett County the third lowest in the state. Now, while I'm on this slide, I'm hearing rumors that the state is wanting to force us to raise, max out our income tax rate. Right now, the cap is three point two zero in the state of Maryland. During this last session, it's been three point two zero for years. During this last session, they raised it to three point three zero. So a lot of counties, I think, in this budget will move to that three point three zero. The rumors I'm hearing is they're not going to, they're not going to fund some of our legislative bonds. The Board of Ed had a hold harmless that they funded this year, one point eight million. They might start taking that back if we don't increase our income tax rate to three point two and they might force us to three point three. I don't know. I don't know if there's any truth to that and you might know more on this, Paul, but I, that's what I'm hearing in the circles that I run in, in the finance.
I'm hearing the same thing.
No increases to the water and sewer ad valorem tax rates and a reduction of four of our twelve sanitary districts. I didn't really go into that, but that's something to note that we're cutting taxes. And real property tax rate, we are proposing a decrease and dropping the rate from a dollar five six to one point zero two. So really, that's it and I'll open it up to questions for you all if you have any for me.
Questions from the county commissioners, comments. I would just like to, first of all, thank you in particular, all joking aside, and everyone in here has heard me say this multiple times and I agree with Jeff. You know, we probably have the best finance department in the state. Not hyperbole, look at the newspaper and see what other counties are going through. You never see Garrett County's name in the newspaper for financial issues. We have a great team that are good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. Cody, Jeff, Scott, your whole team over there, thank you very much. I also want to say thank you to our agencies that we fund. That one point six million trim from requests until the proposed budget doesn't happen without working together and the fact that our agencies that we fund, I think, understand some of the challenges that we face. The five million dollar increase in funding mandates from the state is, is certainly not the end of that. We're going to see more of that as we go forward. And to be able to put a budget together, proposed budget together, that still fully funds pretty much all of the requests and at the same time not see a tax increase and for the first time in a long time, and thank you, look at a real property tax cut, I think is substantial. I think it's remarkable and I think we might be the only county in the state who might be in that position. As I talk to my colleagues around the state, a lot of counties are increasing both their income tax and their property tax rate. Some are manipulating one at the expense of the other and, and, you know, and looking at other fees and everything else. The fact that we've had to wait a few years to get to this point because COVID skewed everything and what you didn't mention, and I think it's appropriate to say, the accommodations tax skyrocketed during COVID and then the question was, where was the new baseline going to be? Was it going to come all the way back to the original? Was it going to be a new baseline that was higher than that? And I think what we've seen is the new baseline is higher than where we started in two thousand twenty. Those visitors that we attracted during COVID, a lot of them have stayed in those rates. That income generation has remained. The other thing, and Steve Kelly's here and his team, Kim, you've heard me mention in here multiple times, this is probably the biggest year for economic development in Garrett County in a very long time. I think you're seeing some of that pay off in some of these projections. You know, when you look at sunrise sanitation moving over from West Virginia into the southern Garrett industrial park, when you look at Amazon going into Kaiser's Ridge industrial park, when you look at what some of the things that are going on in McHenry, you look at some significant housing projects across the county, not to mention the solar project. I don't think the big solar project is baked into this yet. You're talking about a significant revenue stream there coming online in the future. I think it's important to point out, when we look at that graph that shows where expenses outpace revenue, we're looking at thirty thirty-one, thirty thirty-two. If we didn't manipulate the property tax, correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been looking at this stuff all along, that would only be one year more. Like the projection is, it would be only one year past that. So we're not selling out the future. As a matter of fact, I think when all these things come online, you'll see that number push out. I think you guys and the commission team here have done a good job of reining in expenses, which I'm just very excited about this and I just want to applaud your efforts in putting this together and, and still make investments into education, into facilities, into infrastructure and hopefully bring some much needed tax relief to our citizens. This is the first time, provided this budget passes, it's the first time we've seen a look at even, even a recommendation of a real property tax cut in a decade at least, if not, if not longer. So I'm just very, I'm just thankful to you guys and appreciate the whole team here for what, what you guys have done. And with that, I'll shut up and see if anybody else has anything.
I'll echo what Paul said. I mean, he summed up things pretty well. I'll, I'll go back to last year at this time. We discussed lowering property tax rate at that time and we decided against that simply because we, we didn't think the revenue was going to be what it is this year. So we continued with one point oh five six tax rate and in hopes of pushing off raising taxes in the next year or so. With the budget that you presented and your team, it definitely gives us something to think about now and I look at it from the senior of the group here. You know, we could, we could keep the tax rate where it's at. As you all know, Garrett County is a, is a, an aging population, so I'm inclined to agree with Scott that we need to take a hard look at lowering this tax rate to give, instead of, instead of pushing off a tax increase maybe four or five years from now, six or seven years, whatever, give the, give the locals, the people right now, something of a break and rather now than later because maybe later, you know, we'll have to raise taxes. That's, that's a very good possibility, but with the projections you've shown, I just appreciate all the hard work you all put into this and, and as Paul said, we've got a lot of things happening in Garrett County and so I, I think we're safe in taking a real hard look at maybe lowering this rate. Thank you.
I couldn't say any more than I said hi. Thank you and appreciate all your hard work. You know, of course, you'll send us copies of this. We'll look over it over the next two weeks and dissect it the best we can, but I appreciate all your hard work, especially helping, helping senior Larry out here.
Yeah, one thing I, one thing I failed to mention too is we really got our site on this group two. As you know, group two of assessments, the county's broken up into three areas and group two, three years ago, is getting reassessed. So that will, that will tell us a lot. If you remember, we made the headlines, group two, three years ago, Garrett County went up fifty point eight percent on the assessments. The state average was twenty point six. We were the highest in the state. Then in group three, the next year, it went up forty-four point two percent. The state average is twenty-three point four. We weren't the highest, but we are ranking up there in the top. And then group one, one of the reasons we were being able to, were able to cut, it came in a little higher than what we anticipated. Group one is the smallest area of the county. Like the others could just gobble it up in assessable base. So then he has like eight hundred million dollars of assessment in, in that category and it's made up of Swanton, Friendsville, Grantsville, Bloomington, Kaiser's Ridge, Fenzel area, all, all those areas. It, it came in at twenty-three point six, which is around, state average is twenty point one, so we weren't out of line, but we really are honing in on and waiting for this new group two because in our projections, our models, we were like, it could be flat or going, or going the other way and that's what we don't want because I've lived through that where we've lost and assessments actually declined and we lost four million dollars overnight and we had to adjust. I've been through that cycle before. We hope that's not the case. We don't think that's the, the case in talking to the local office. They do, they do think there's going to be some increase. In our models, I think we built, Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, three percent increase. So we'll keep our sights on that and if it, if it, if it goes over that, I mean, again, we'll adjust our funding model and see what the state has to do. So it'll be interesting this time next year to see what we can do.
Scott, one real quick question. If, if we would cut the rate to your recommendation, where does that put us in comparison from what you know right now, from what other counties are doing? We were at three and I think we're at five now as far as highest in property tax rate. Where does that take us to?
Yeah, so we sent out a survey as of last week. Mako sent it out for us. I requested that because I wanted to see where we would, what everybody was doing, who was going up, who was going down, what they were proposing. Now, what's weird about that is some counties, they report on a Mako survey or the documents that you see online and they might put a dollar, but then they have a fire tax or something, a special tax that you can't get out of.
It's part of the property tax, but they don't report it that way.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I'm saying you've got to add the two together to get a real rate because you, you can't get out of not paying that. So like our fire, our fire tax is built into now the dollar two if you accept that, but they, they separate that out. So anyway, long story short, we, we have real data in, in the survey and we did some research even as far as today and I think with us dropping to a dollar two, we will be tenth in the, in the county where we were fifth before that. So.
My guess is that that will change slightly as budgets are finalized.
Oh, yeah. Again, so I think a lot of these counties were banking on that income tax increase because most of the counties are maxed out at three point two. So they were just waiting for that to go up. Now that they've moved the needle on that, you'll see a lot of these counties hit three point three and max that out. Then after that, they don't have much options. I mean, they're going to go to their tax rate and with the blueprint rolling out, I think you're going to see people move their tax rates upward.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioner? Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, first off, I want to really tell you how much I appreciate the complexity. I'm new at this coming up and, you know, I could have been here years ago, but that's here I am now trying to support everybody. So my question is really is this is from, from your standpoint, what would you consider constructive criticism? I mean, rather than just complaining about something, you know, what things do you have control over? Do we have control over, you know, in terms of, you know, like, what would you like to hear us say? Is that a priority thing? Obviously, I mean, my naive, limited, you know, view is we got a budget, we're either going to have to tighten our belts or move money from one bin to to another. So, my question is, like, how much do we have control over? And like, what constitutes constructive criticism, or, you know, comment, or, you know, criticism, or, or, you know, desire on our, you know?
I appreciate your question, and, and the answer is as complex as you may think. And Scott, you probably know the direct, the real numbers on this. The, the amount of control the local county has on this budget is not what you think it is, or what the average person thinks it is. There are a lot of mandates baked in there. The school funding is non-negotiable. It is what it is. When they say you're paying, you know, now we're giving you the assessment office, I mean, that's what it is. A lot of the health department funding is mandated by the state. So, a lot of those expenses in particular are out of our control. We have a hundred percent control over county roads budget. It's the second largest part of the budget. And working with the sheriff, we have a lot of control over the sheriff's department budget, although they have their own mandates that they have to live within. We have very little within the health department budget. Some of the community college costs, we have some control over as far as what will expend, but they have their own set of rules. Public schools don't have any except the capital. And then the revenue, of course, we can manipulate the rates. There are some taxes that we need state approval to manipulate, and, and then others that we don't. So, I think the answer to your question of what do we have control over and what do we don't is very complicated, and it could take a long time to answer that. I hope that brief overview gives you some idea of that. Then, as far as what would constructive criticism be, I think, you know, but who's an informed public to share whatever they deem as their priorities with their elected officials? So, I don't think there's a limit or a cap to that, or whatever you happen to feel passionate or strongly about, you should share that, you know, with us. And if you have questions on specifics, I'd highly recommend you talk to Scott, because I think you can tell just by the presentation, he's, he's very informed, and, and he's got a good handle on these things. Yes, sir?
The, if I heard you correctly, one of the things in the education side of things that affects Garrett County a lot is this thing you call child wealth. Am I, is that right?
It's...
Part of the formula for...
Yes, it's our, it's our wealth, it's the county's wealth compared to the state's and where we rank.
But you actually use the term child wealth, as if each, each one has...
Per pupil. Yeah, it's per pupil, per pupil.
Per pupil?
Yes.
How, how do I learn more about that if I wanted to go online?
Cody, what, what would you suggest? I mean, it's very complex, but there's tons of resources online.
It's extremely complex.
After this is, after this is over, come up and I'll show you our model. Like, it's like twenty-five sheets, twenty?
No, that's okay. I think you're wordful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious, because that's, it seemed to me that that was one of the things that affected what you were going to get.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Greatly.
So, so again, like, back to the assessments. Cody honed in on this. Assessments makes up sixty, seventy percent of that form?
Yeah, seventy, seventy percent.
Of wealth. And income, income tax makes up the other. So, we look at assessments, and then, then there's a lag. So, when Group Two increased by fifty percent one year, we knew it was going to affect our funding a year later, because it lags a year. We're like, the state's going to say, you have more, your wealth outpaced ours. It went up fifty percent, and we only went up twenty. So, you're going to pay more of this bill. Okay? And that's, that's how that sort of works in a nutshell. And I'm oversimplifying that, by all means.
Len?
Yeah, I don't think anybody underestimates the complexity of the budget or how much work went into it. At the same time, it seems like there's tremendous trepidation about what the feds are going to do. There's people working hard at the nonprofits, and so the people doing that hard work and the people they serve have a lot of trepidation about that. It just doesn't seem like there's any contingencies in the budget to cover folks knocking on the commission's door after the feds cut this or that and saying, can you, can you help?
Yeah, that, I mean, I can say our reserves at are at great level. So, if the commissioners would decide, if someone gets their funding cut to fund that, I think I heard in one of your presentations, you said it's not really our job to fund them. I mean, if you choose to, that's one thing, but we can't, we can't plug all the gaps if they lose all the...
My comment was that there cannot be a reasonable expectation that the citizens of Garrett County can backfill federal government cuts.
Yeah.
Chris, do you want to?
Yeah, I'd just comment on that. It, it would be, it'd be fabulous for you to do that. But if you did, and the counties around us did, then Garrett County would suddenly find thousands of...
People.
People coming in.
Funding in, yep.
Because community action in Garrett County is still funded. And then we would, we'd still be in the same situation.
And then you would need more money, because you would have more clients.
I mean, if all county governments would do that, it'd be fabulous. But it truly would be, it wouldn't solve the problem we think it would solve, for you to backfill indefinitely, or what. I think, I mean, you've already helped us, and, and I'm sure would in a, with a hiccup in one, one program or something, I, you know. But, but, you know, Head Start, oh, there's still a way, for instance. There's many ways. I mean, that's millions of dollars a year that Garrett County is funded for, for Head Start. And, and that's true in every county. So, there's just no way that, that you could make a contingency for that. But I was sitting, to, to Len's point, I was sitting here thinking, hmm, you sure we want to cut the real property tax?
I want to second that. That does seem a little bit naive, in my opinion.
Just to, and I get it. I mean, you've got a budget balance. That, you know, I'm not that guy, right? I'm the, I'm the pie in the sky guy. But it did make me think, oh, well, given what's going on, maybe. But again, that's not, I would not argue for or against that decision. It was just a question.
Yeah, I guess my question, and there's difference in philosophy on this, and we, we struggled. We sat around as a finance team, struggling with this. I mean, what would you say a reserve level should be, a percentage-wise, before, before you're hoarding money, you're hoarding the taxpayers' money? And that's, that's a different answer for every person in this room.
Absolutely.
And that's what we struggled with when we even proposed to drop the rate, because we know we're going to need it for the future. But that's five years down the road, or six years down the road. And it's like, how, how far do we hoard the money when there's so many variables that can change every night? Like, I did have, like, the one windmill project in our long-term projections that we already have a pilot agreement with, and it's going to generate one point eight million dollars. So, we have that in.
Solar, solar project.
Solar, what'd I say?
Wind.
Yeah, solar project. But there's another big one out there that's bigger than that one, that I don't have on the radar. So, we talked about that, and it's like, I'm not, there's nothing, like, in writing that that one's for sure secure. So, we're not going to bake it into our model yet. But you got things like that that will give us a blip on, on the radar for more revenue. But I think we'll, we'll look at that and adjust accordingly as, as new information comes in. And I don't know that it's, again, I don't know that it's naive to drop it when we have sufficient reserves right now.
Mike?
I'd say no, it's not. Well, I mean, because it, the property tax rate hasn't been changed in eleven years, I think. And it has increased substantially a couple of years. And we have property tax accounts for about sixty percent of the revenue. And a lot of that comes from Section Two, which is Blake. So, a lot of it is businesses who are paying property taxes. It's rental properties, and it's second homeowners. So, they're contributing a lot. And they have economic headwinds as well. So, they're not getting property tax relief. Those hundred percent increases in value are brought on the tax base in three years. Mine's brought in the tax base of ten years. So, I think just for, so, the tax, over the year eleven years, the tax has been shifting to them every year, because they don't get the home state credit, they don't get any other tax relief. They're paying the full amount within three years. So, that is disavantaging. And I think that could be exacerbated by the current chaos in Washington, DC. Somebody told me that sales here are not going well. Rentals may not be what they've been in the past. When you look, you had a table up there where you looked at accommodation tax, transfer tax, and recordation tax. They counted for ten percent of the revenue you had there. And you may not realize that if people stay away because of the economic situation they're facing. So, I think it's prudent, I might have mentioned this before, I don't remember, to lower the property tax rate. I don't know what the constant yield rate is, but I think it's a step in the right direction. And I've dealt with Scott on a number of things over a number of years, and nobody's more transparent. He's helpful. Every, anytime I'm asked for something, he's given it. He is, I don't want to say conservative, but I think cautious, which serves you well and serves us well.
I agree.
Doesn't put anybody at risk. So, I found his arguments very compelling about lowering the, the property tax rate. But I have a question about the, I have a question about, what is it? I have a, I have an important question. It's about, it's about the, the transfers for education. And you said that one, sixty percent of the formula is property tax base per student. Is the other forty percent income tax base per student?
Cody, can you answer that?
Is that right? Are they both?
I'm going to have Cody answer this, because he's my blueprint expert.
I was talking to the back there, but real estate property assessments...
Assessment, yeah.
Is about seventy-two, seventy-three percent. It changed...
Per student?
No. So, on the foundation program, it's not on a per student basis. Our bill would be the exact same if we had one student or ten thousand students. On the other programs that are kind of lesser in the cost, it is on a per student basis. So, it's, the answer's a little bit of both.
And how is income based, but is it the same thing?
So, that is taxable income, not tax yield, and it's twenty percent. And then there's some really small percentages for public utilities.
So, both of those measures are measures of effort. Not effort, they're measures of capacity.
Of course.
And most grants have both a capacity measure and an effort measure. I don't know if the, the counties have been pushing for some sort of an effort dimension to the formula, because you're high on the effort for property taxes, and you're low on income taxes. So, if they're going to make you increase your income taxes, say, well, all right, we need to get something for that, put effort into the formula.
I'll answer that. The direct answer to your question is yes. Being part of Mako, that's always a big argument that is made. The state has thus far not given that much credit. What, what you will find at the state level is, they've pretty much went all in on the blueprint, and they are extremely reluctant to change anything. Even when, and I used this example the other day, so, the Maryland, the Maryland Association of Counties, Mako, is, is the group that all the counties work together for this. Their counterpart with Boards of Education is called MAB. Their counterpart with state superintendents is called PZAM. And typically, those three groups never agree on anything, because they seem to be competing for the same resources. Although, in this particular case, not only did those three groups all agree on four changes to the blueprint, so did the governor. So, you had the executive branch of the Maryland State Government, the Maryland Boards of Education, across the board, all the superintendents and all the counties agreed that they should make four changes to the blueprint. None of them got through. One of them kind of did. And that's because the state legislature basically said, we've made a commitment to do this, and we're doing it. And so, even though there was a lot of headwind to make some, what I would argue is very common sense reform, and most of it was just delaying some things, not eliminating them, the, which seemed to be somewhat low-hanging fruit for, for the state, they rejected them and, and didn't take them. So, the argument that effort should be taken into account, which I agree with you a hundred percent, the legislature has not agreed with that to this point.
That's our standard these days, I think. Do you have a capacity measure and an effort measure? Ask somebody just to run an estimate of what that would do to the distribution of the grant money. Can I ask a process question?
Sure.
It seems that Scott and his group has done a lot of work putting this proposal together. Have you guys, what's been your role in putting this together? Have you met and said, well, we want to do public safety and not health, or we need to do roads, we don't have flexibility here? What's, what's the interaction? What role have you guys played in setting these priorities? Because that goes to the questions that the other people have raised. One of my pet peeves is you haven't listened to the, the workers that aren't here. You've had the people that you already fund come in, which seems to suggest the budget is sort of a cost plus or incremental budget. But what's your role in setting the priorities and deciding? I assume there's some residual money from previous years, or some money you have spent. How's this, what's, what's your role in putting this together?
I think the, what has happened up to this point, obviously, we listened to the presentations. We had talked to Scott back in, I don't know, January or December about some of the things that we wanted to see coming through the budget. One of the questions was, what are you thinking about in, in regards to salaries of employees, because that'll drive some of the budget on general fund. A lot of the stuff that we just mentioned, we don't have any control over. It's more informational of as the legislature moves through this, what's it look like, and then asking for estimates. One of the things we did direct from months ago was, is there an opportunity to cut the tax rate? And I'm glad to see that we saw that come through in this presentation. Our other pri, I would argue, priority, if you will, has been, how do we, one of our major priorities over the last several years, which we haven't talked about much in this budget presentation, is how do we try to take care of our fire and rescue? Outside of blueprint, my concern moving forward is, what could potentially be an exponential increase in cost for fire and rescue? If we don't get, we've already kind of seen it happen in, in the rescue squads. If the fire departments start losing their volunteer rates, like we anticipate where they age out, we're seeing a lot of volunteers age out, and we're not seeing the young people step in to take it over. We're going to have to backfill some of that with paid people. That's just the way, if, if we're going to provide fire service, which kind of are behold to do. That's a priority. It has been for a couple of years. Same with incentivizing the sheriff's department and trying to take care of what the sheriff, and again, I'll go back to, I don't think any of the sheriff's requests were out of line. Most counties, for a variety of reasons, are having recruitment and retention issues in their sheriff's department. We're fully staffed, as far as I understand from the sheriff. I think that's because we've made a priority in doing that. So, have we sat around and line item this and said, we want this, this, and this? No, we haven't. Have we given general priorities? Yes, we have, and that's where we are.
Well, I think that's the question that's been raised, is priorities. You've said, here's the stuff we're interested in, and here's community action and the stuff you're not interested in. But then you had a proclamation talking about how important all that is. Twenty-five percent of the people you said get direct benefits from community action programs, and the rest of the county benefits their families. And they could face twenty-five And they could face twenty-five percent cut in federal grants. And how does that fit into your priority setting? I mean, you did respond when there was a problem with transportation in January. They lost funding, they didn't have any money to get people to the hospitals. So, you guys stepped up with some magic that Scott pulled out when nobody was looking, I guess, or wherever. But you found the money for it. I think the anxiety that a lot of people has is, those, those are your priorities too, because you said how important they are to your constituents. How do they get fed into the discussions? I guess you're gonna have, you have these internally discussions over the next two weeks about what you're gonna do with regard to this budget? Or how, how does that get into that discussion? Those are priorities for the community, as well as having the snow cleared and things like that.
Well, I, I'll personally, just respond personally to that. I, I think two things. One, as we stand here right now, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, the proposed budget fully funds community actions request. We can sit here and, and wonder what may happen, what may not happen. We don't know what's gonna happen.
Let me know some things, Joe.
Well, I don't think we know definitively all of the things that
Not all.
Will lay out. And, you know, we do have a healthy reserve. And if something comes out and Chris comes to us, like he did the last time, and we had a dialogue about what we might be able to do and what we might not be able to do, and we can help, we certainly will. I will follow my sword in saying that if the expectation is for the, for Garrett County government to fund blueprint mandates, all of the stuff the state is gonna push down on us and backfill all the federal cuts to community action, that is an unreasonable request by any standard. Is it reasonable to say, can you help if mules on wheels gets cut? Sure. Back to Chris's point that I think was very well taken. Is it reasonable to say, can you fully fund Head Start if they cut it? I, I don't think that's reasonable to even expect. So, I think with what we know is happening right now, this budget fully funds community actions request that, a- as presented. So, might there be cuts down the road? We won't know that definitively until, I, what, October, fiscal October the first for the feds?
Think they'll have a budget.
Well, then, if they have a budget. And I think we're, I think we are in a position, because I think the fin, I, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I firmly believe this, and, and I appreciate your comments on this. I think we're in very good hands financially with the management of the budget by our finance department. That does have a healthy reserve. And if there are issues that arise that are significant, then I think we're in a position to at least be able to short-term affect that and help in working together with community action. That's my answer to that question, is I, it's not, it's not a commission, that's Paul Edwards's answer to your question and to how I think we would move forward.
I did that, Scott.
Hold, hold on one second, please. And then, yes, you're next. You're next.
I really have to agree with what Paul said. I, I, I don't think we can sit here and say, okay, this, this situation's gonna happen, we need, we need to fund it. I think if somebody brings a situation to us, that's when I think we discuss it. And if Paul said, we have some reserves, maybe we can help, maybe we can't, maybe we feel it's not a priority to help. I thi, I think we take those situations on a, on a one-on-one basis and make, make our decision as to what we can, what we can and can't help with. There's gonna be a lot of people affected, I understand that. But also, if we try to help everybody that needs help, then we're gonna raise taxes to help those people. So, where do, where do we fit in there? Right now, you're saying you think it's a great idea to cut taxes. So, I, I have to agree with what Scott has said. I, I'm gonna look real hard at doing that, simply because the elderly in this county need a break. The people at the lake, I think they need a break. And, you know, to push it down the road right now, I don't think it's the proper thing to do. I think the proper thing to do is, is take a real hard look at whether we go to one point oh-two, oh-three, oh-four, whatever, whatever we decide that might be. But Scott's the expert on this. I hold a lot of esteem for him and what he has said.
I'd say, I echo what they say. I mean, you know, you, you brought it up, the group two and the businesses are, are footing this bill, you know? And it's, I think, a, a good priority to take some weight off them, more than speculate what might come from the, the federal government. It's kind of a cross that bridge when we get there. We can readjust if we need to, but at this point, I think it's a good, solid recommendation.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we cut you off there. Go ahead, go ahead. Floor is yours.
My mother is ninety-three, almost ninety-four, and she's lived on the lake for thirty years. And she has been able to get the property tax credit?
Homestead tax.
Homestead.
Oh, you love that. So, so you had said something about it would take five or six years for certain things to fall apart? Or I, I'm not exactly how you said that.
Yep.
So, would that be part of that process? Because that would be affected by the federal government, I assume, cuz they're the ones with most of the money that they provide to the states. And then, you know, help out with whatever programs, like community actions. Is that part of community action, I think? But I don't really know.
Yeah, so, so my comment was just, our revenue projections and our expense projections for the future, our expenditures will exceed our revenue in about five or six years, and we'll have to do something. But then I followed up to say, we still have some conservatism built in to our projections on the revenue side. So, we might be able to get an extra year on that.
So, will that be, I guess, like, you know, will it be impacted? You're saying October is when they do their budget?
The fe, federal budget works on a different fiscal year than everyone else. So, we'll know what the federal budget is for certain, provided they have a balanced budget in, in October.
And so, would that type of program be in danger?
The homestead tax credit?
Yes.
No, that's a, that's a state program that's, which we do have control over.
Yeah.
That is one thing we actually have some control over at the, at the local level.
Yeah, we, we actually dropped that to give, give the residents, primary residents, a break last year. I thought, or two years ago. Did we do that two years ago?
It went into effect last year.
It was, it was five percent, and we reduced it down to three percent. So, what that says is, you're only paying on an increase of your assessment on three percent each year, so.
Yeah, cuz even though she has a lake property, she has a low income.
Right, right, yeah.
That's what I was gonna mention. There's a homestead credit that says if you own the property, they limit how much of the assessed taxable value can increase each year.
Yeah, that, that's what she's in, that's what she's asking.
They also have a homeowner's tax credit, which is different. And it says, it looks at your property tax liability, what's your, how, how much they want you to pay relative to your income. So, if the income's, I don't know what it is, to go up to forty-five or sixty thousand dollars?
I don't think it's that high.
Thirty thousand. So, if the income's thirty or forty thousand dollars and, and your tax liability is a higher, a, a too high of a share of that, you, that is a real credit, you don't have to pay that back.
Yeah, I've never really done a numbers person, so I'm just trying to.
Well, the, the assessment office downstairs has all the papers you need, they can apply help you apply.
They have the help.
Ask, ask them about the homeowner's tax credit.
Yeah, before, we're, we're, you're welcome. Thanks for the question. Before we move any further, I, I do think, for Scott's purposes, and, and I know that, you know, I hope people realize, I, I know we're kind of beating, to an extent, a dead horse here, but it is important. You know, this, this budget proposal wasn't drafted yesterday. This has been months of work to put this together. And based on this property tax rate, if any one of the three of us are, objects to that property tax rate, I think it behooves us to say that now, so that over the next two weeks, Scott has time to recraft a budget that, that will have to vote on it at some point. We do have through June thirty to actually adopt it. But right now, the, the hope is, you know, we'll be in a position to do that maybe on the second. But that is, I think, entirely contingent on at least saying, we're pretty comfortable with that tax rate. So, if not, I think now's the time to speak up. So, what I, what I'm hearing without hearing is, we're pretty comfortable with, with that tax rate. So, I think that, I think that gives you the, the foresight then to fine-tune things based on that rate. Carol, is there any way you can put, I, I don't know if we still have anybody watching online or not, but just for the benefit of anybody that might still be watching, and certainly for anybody in here, as they, they walk away from this and digest this and, and, you know, think back to it, to comment, can you put the email address back up for the comments?
Sure.
Which is simply what comment that, what's the email address, Scott? Yeah, comments@GarrettCountyMD.gov. So, if you, if you have questions, and these are great questions, every question in here is a good question. You know, blueprint is, is the driver, and it is very, very complex. So, feel free to call in, talk, Cody is an expert, I think, on blueprint. I think he knows as much about it as anybody. I've talked to him both the fi, in the finance world of county and in, in public schools. So, he's a great resource. Please feel free to reach out and, and reach out to Scott. With that, Chris, one more thing?
Just real quick, because we've mentioned GTS a couple of times in the back building, one of our commitments to you all was that community action would, would modernize and find some technology that would increase our efficiency and our service. And so, last Thursday, our board directors approved the purchase of a new system. It will still allow for people to call in and make their schedules the way they've been doing. But, but on our end, our dispatchers will be, our schedulers will be putting that into a new system that will, that uses AI and other tools to, to be able to maximize our routing. But it will also come with an app-based product where, where if you have the app, you'll be able to see the bus as it comes to your, you'll know where it is. And so, that's, we're very excited about that. We think that's gonna really increase the, the level of satisfaction and, and service that GTS offers to people in the county. So, we're very, super excited to do that. That was, when I talked to our board about that last week, I said, you know, that was one of the commitments we made to the commission when they funded us. And so, I wanted to report that to you.
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you all for being engaged, coming out. Thanks for your questions. Please stay engaged. And with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
All right? Thank you all.